We call the Wilmer City Council meeting for Monday, October 10th to order roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Ask.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Plowman.
Nelson.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Councilmember Plowman has an excused absent. He is attending an event with his children tonight. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as presented? Councilmember Ask.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we amend the agenda to move forward the consideration of Civic Center Arena Special Event by on-sale liquor license holder permit, item number 15, just moving that forward in the agenda out of a kindness to those members of the community who are here to speak to that.
Would it be okay with you if we moved it between items eight and nine? Would that be all right?
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else?
Mayor.
Councilmember O'Brien.
I'd like to pull number five and ask to have the MUC minutes pulled for an update from General Manager Herron, who is here tonight.
Okay, we'll do that. Anything else on the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the amended agenda. All in favor of that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next we have consent items. First, go ahead, Councilor, City Clerk Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the City Council minutes of October 4th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of October 11th, Planning Commission minutes of October 6th, Rice Hospital Board minutes of June 2nd, the Rice Hospital Board minutes of September 1st, the Accounts Payable Report for September 30th through October 13th, an application for exempt permit from Wilmer Blue Line Club Hockey Boosters, council's acceptance, the building report for the month of September, and for council's information, the appointment to Municipal Utilities Commission of Dave Baumgart.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the consent items with the exception of item number B. Discussion. All in favor, I'm sorry, yes, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next I'll call in Councilmember O'Brien. Councilmember O'Brien?
Yeah, are we talking, I'd like to pull number five.
B, yes.
And I'd ask General Manager Herron to speak about the minutes that were given to us at the last meeting, at the MUC meeting.
Okay. Mr. Herron, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilor O'Brien. Thank you, Mayor Calvin. What Councilor O'Brien is referring to in the minute said he would ask that I provide an update to is our water treatment plant project. Our water treatment plants, we have two plants in town, they're pushing 30 years old and they're in need of updating and upgrading. So, we're pleased, are pleased to be in front of you tonight to give you an update on the funding for our projects. Now, there's no guarantees that we're going to receive any state funding. However, the bonding legislative, Minnesota Legislative Bonding Committee is going to be in town tomorrow. You may or may not be aware of that. There's three community projects that are going to be presented to the bonding committee, and our water treatment plant is one of those three. So, we're looking at a plant cost right now of $21.1 million. We're looking at WMU share, the city share, of $4.2 million, and we have asked the state through their direct appropriation, state grant funding, to pick up 80% of $16.9 million. So, we're pleased that we made the list for the bonding committee to come out. That's a good indication that at least that they're considering our project. So, we feel very fortunate. With that said, also on the federal level, we have Senator, I want to say Fishbuck, but Klobuchar, thank you. We have Senator Klobuchar is carrying our project at the federal level, and we also made it into the appropriations committee. So, our request there is being marked up at that level as well. So, hopefully between federal and state that we're able to acquire some grant dollars which will make this project more affordable. It would minimize the impacts that we will need on our rate. So, in addition to that, I'd like to also thank our mayor. He had the pleasure of meeting with the governor on Saturday and pitched our project as well, and our governor seemed to be very receptive as well. So, stars are lining up to receive some funding either at state or federal, or maybe a little at both. So, that's where we're at with our project. So, any questions?
John, I have a question for you. Is anybody helping you on the federal level at all? I know in the past, the city of Wilmer, along with the Municipal Utilities Commission and Rice Hospital, all had a joint lobbyist, and I believe it was David Church, and I think Kodiak worked with their firm at that time. Are you still using them, or could you give us a little update on that?
Sure, Mayor Calvin. Thank you for the question. We did retain David Church and Associates to help us at the federal level. Kodiak's no longer with the firm anymore, so we have a gentleman by the name of Jamie. His last name, I don't recall what it is right now, but Jamie is versus Kodiak. And we had dropped their services as well a number of years back that we didn't feel that we, that there was value in retaining their services. However, when this project came up, earmarks came back here the first of the year. We felt that there was opportunity to, you know, try and obtain some federal dollars, and we figured a good avenue to do that would be to retain a consulting service down in DC to help us with that. They have been very instrumental. I don't believe we would be in the appropriations if we had not retained their services. So, at this point, I would say that it's money well spent with David Church and Associates.
Okay, and then, I don't mean to steal the thunder here, but I have a couple more questions. So, on the earmarks, we all know earmarks came back, and I was interviewed by the Washington Post in regards to the earmarks piece, and I'd reached out to you at that time. And my understanding is that you'd reached out to Congresswoman Fishbuck's office, but she wasn't willing to carry our earmark, but Senators Klobuchar was able to pick that up then. Is that, is my memory correct? This was a few months ago, so.
Yeah, Mayor Calvin, that is correct. We started out when earmarks came in, working with David Church's office. He said our best avenue to acquiring earmarks would be through Representative Fishbuck. However, not Representative, yeah.
Congresswoman.
Anyway, from my understanding, she did not carry any earmarks.
Right.
So, for whatever reason, don't know the details, she didn't carry any. David Church and Associates then said, let's reach out to Senator Klobuchar. So, we did that, and Senator Klobuchar was more than willing to carry our request.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Any of the councilmembers have any questions other than that? Thank you for your report. Councilmember O'Brien?
Thank you.
Would you be willing to file those?
Pardon?
Would you be willing to file item number B?
Yes, I will.
Second. Motion made and seconded to file Municipal Utilities Commission's minutes of October 11th. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. I see that we have liquor, no, we don't have liquor. So, a simple motion is okay there because there's no resolutions and no alcohol, correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. Next, do we have any open forum items?
No, Mr. Mayor, there's no one who has signed up.
So, then we'll go to item number 15. Item number 15 is consideration of a Civic Center Arena Special Event on-sale liquor license permit, holder permit, Ms. Thompson, our city clerk.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on tonight's packet, or in packet, we have the Civic Center has rented space to the Wilmer Warhawks, who plan to serve alcohol during the hockey season running from October through March of 2022. The Civic Center Arena Special Event by an on-sale liquor license holder permit is required to distribute or consume alcohol on the Civic Center grounds. Permits have been approved since 2016 for the Wilmer hockey season. This year, Spurs Corporation, doing business as Spurs Grill and Bar, has applied for the permit with onsite employee listed as Willie Gonzalez. So, staff is recommending that you approve this permit, and just to add to it, everyone's aware of what happened on the 8th, and city staff believes this is an issue between the tenant, being the Warhawks, under their lease with the city, and not with the liquor holder this time.
Mr. Scott, do you have any comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I guess just to flesh out a little bit what the council is being asked to do tonight. You are considering the application for a liquor license to serve on-sale malt liquor at the Civic Center, and this is not a proceeding to consider an alleged violation of any ordinances. City Clerk Thompson mentioned what happened on October 8th, when I believe alcohol was served at an event before this license had been approved. The council should know that the city code establishes the criteria by which you must determine if the applicant is entitled to a license. The incident on October 8th would not rise to the level that would provide grounds for the council to deny the license. What it would take for the council to deny a license application for something like that would be if the applicant had previously had a liquor license revoked by the city or by any other jurisdiction in the state, or if the applicant had been criminally convicted of a violation of the city's ordinance, including its licensing ordinance. That's obviously not the case. The incident that happened on the 8th, again, staff's, my understanding of staff's intent is that that's an issue that will be addressed with the tenant, who is responsible for ensuring that events operated at the space are operated in accordance with the city's ordinances, including its licensing regulations. So, with that, my understanding again, staff has reviewed the application from this applicant and confirmed that the applicant has satisfied the criteria in ordinance, and again, is recommending that the council approve this license. But with all that said, I'd be happy to take any questions the council may have.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor?
Councilmember O'Brien?
I'd like to approve this licensing procedure.
So, you would like to approve the special Civic Center Arena Special Event on-sale liquor license permit holder with Spurs?
Yes, I would.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Thank you, guys. You bet. Next, we have a consideration of an ordinance of introduction of a resolution approving Block 25 TIF plan instead of public hearing. Who am I going to?
Coyote's going to introduce it.
I don't have that on my sheet, so.
I'll introduce Tom.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, before you tonight is a consideration of a proposed 15-year tax, TIF District for Number One Development Company of Avon. I have the city's TIF consultant here tonight, Tom Denaway, who will expand more on the TIF plan for Block 25. The Planning Commission on October 13 reviewed the TIF plan for Block 25 and recommended for the action to the city council. So, if I may, Mr. Mayor, invite Mr. Tom Denaway.
Thank you, Coyote. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'll pull this up real quick. My name is Tom Denaway. I am with Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors. We are the city's TIF consultant, and going to provide a quick overview tonight, mostly a little bit of TIF 101, and then a little bit about the project. So, this is the first meeting of what would be ultimately two meetings as relates to the creation or approval of this TIF district. So, the action that is before you tonight, if you're so inclined, would be the adoption of a resolution calling for a public hearing to be held at the next meeting on November 1st. So, that's the action that's before you tonight. To begin with, just want to talk a little bit about what is tax increment financing, what is a redevelopment TIF district, and then what the development scenario is and what the next steps would be. So, TIF is a method of capturing the future tax base growth resulting from new development. It captures that local growth, or incremental growth in local taxes, and it uses those future taxes to reimburse for public improvements related to that development. There's a specific term for the capture of that future tax increment revenue, and then ultimately, the new development is added to the tax base. So, TIF is defined by state statute. It's a gap financing tool. Depending on the year created, there's different compliance requirements. It's used mainly by cities and counties, and ultimately, the main goal of TIF is to provide an incentive for development, to help development occur that would not otherwise occur, which is also commonly referred to as the "but-for" finding with the TIF district. It's to help remove barriers to investment, to help allow development to happen in places where it might not otherwise be, or where there might be physical or financial barriers to that development occurring. So, the type of TIF district we're looking at tonight is a redevelopment TIF district, and I can talk a little bit, I'll talk a little bit later in the presentation about what that means. But depending on the type of TIF districts, there are certain qualifications that have to be met. With a redevelopment district, the qualifications have to do with the existing condition of the property. So, redevelopment districts have a total term of 25 years from the first receipt of increment. So, it'd actually be 26 total years, but that's the way that statute's written. What we're looking at tonight is a proposed term of 15 years. The city has a TIF policy that maximizes durations of TIF districts of 15 years. You could choose to go beyond that policy to allow the full term, but the proposed district tonight would meet that term of 15 years, as opposed to the maximum statutory term of 26 years. So, when we talk about TIF, there are limitations on how we can use those future TIF dollars and what types of costs can be incurred or funded now, and they're related largely to public improvements, land acquisition, soil correction, site preparation, demolition, building improvements in limited circumstances, relocation, and then as well as financing and interest costs related to that. Additionally, the city can retain up to 10% of the tax increment revenue to fund city incurred administrative expenses related to the administration of the district, and these have to be documented expenses related to like the, you know, the auditing of the TIF districts, the reporting to the state auditor's office, those types of things that are directly correlated to the administration of the district. Unfortunately, it just can't take 10% and set it aside. It has to be direct documented, receded expenses that can be used under that administrative expense line item. So, when we talk about public improvements, we're really talking to projects that have a direct nexus related to the project. And these are streets and road improvements, utilities, bridges and interchanges, to the extent that are related to the project, parking lots, sidewalks and walkways, as well as engineering and design costs related to those. We can't create a TIF district and use it to fund an infrastructure or a new interchange on the other side of town that doesn't have a correlation to the project. The legislature wants a direct nexus between what is being funded by the project and why it is necessary for TIF to be used to create or fund that public improvement. Additionally, we can't use public improvements for broader, quote-unquote, public improvements, such as like city centers, or public safety buildings, or public works buildings. Again, they want there to be a correlation and a nexus between the use of TIF and the project that is being captured within that TIF district. Similarly, we can't use it for parks and rec type purposes either, and we can't collect administration beyond 10% of the TIF revenues. So, graphically, this is what, this graph tries to illustrate TIF over the lifetime of a district. So, with TIF, the base level of existing taxes paid by the property continue to flow to each of the taxing jurisdiction. This is kind of that blue column across the bottom here. Everything that everybody, any taxing jurisdiction is currently receiving on the property, they will continue to receive on the property for the duration of the TIF district. When you have a new building that is built on that property or on that site, the incremental growth in property taxes applicable to the local taxing jurisdictions, the city, the county, the school district, and then some of the smaller ones like the watershed and whatnot, those, the growth in that incremental amount of taxes in the future is what gets captured. So, that's this kind of gray area here. So, that gets captured for a period of time, depending on whatever the duration of the TIF district is. In this case, it's proposed to be 15 years. And then at the end of that, the district's decertified, and that property tax base and that market value gets added to the overall tax base of the city and each of the taxing jurisdictions as a whole, and everybody benefits and realizes those increased taxes as a result of that project. So, when we talk about TIF districts, we're talking about financing improvements that are incurred today with future tax revenue dollars that are going to be incurred tomorrow and in subsequent years. So, how do we bridge that gap between this future source of revenue and costs that are going to be incurred now? There's two primary ways of doing that. One is bonding, where the city would issue TIF bonds and then repay those TIF bonds with the future revenues from the district. And then the other way, that's the more common way, and the way that is proposed here, is to do it on a pay-as-you-go basis. So, in this case, the developer that the city would be working with on this project would be responsible for incurring all of these TIF-eligible costs now. They would be responsible for funding these improvements out of pocket, and then they would be reimbursed on a pay-as-you-go basis to the extent that tax increment revenue is generated over the life of the district. So, there would be a set amount that they would be eligible for reimbursement for. They'd be eligible to receive likely 90% of the annual TIF revenue to the extent that is generated, and they would be eligible to receive that for a set period of time, likely to be 15 years. This is all going to be incorporated within a development agreement that will be brought back to you at a later date, but those are the general terms. To the extent that that TIF revenue comes in at a lower rate or at a lesser amount than originally projected, the city has zero obligation to make up any shortfalls in that agreement. All of that risk of the future TIF revenue being as projected, and that future tax increment revenue is all subject to future property tax rates, property tax structures, those can change from time to time. So, all of that future risk is ultimately being borne by the developer. The city's only obligation would be to reimburse them to the extent that tax increment revenue is projected. If the revenue comes in at a faster rate than is currently projected, that amount would get paid down faster, and then the district would be capable of being decertified earlier. So, with the pay-as-you-go format, all of the risk of performance is based upon the developer. The city has no obligation if there's any shortfalls, and if the revenue comes in at a faster rate than projected, the city benefits by the TIF district being decertified earlier. So, what allows a redevelopment TIF district to be created? So, TIF districts typically either eligible to be created based on either the current condition of the property or the end use. Redevelopment districts are based on the current condition of the property. So, there's a set of tests that have to be met as it relates to that property. The first is that the property within the district has to be occupied. So, 70% of the parcels comprising the TIF district have to be occupied by some sort of improvement as defined by statute, and that improvement include buildings, streets, utilities, parking lots, including gravel parking lots. So, in the case of this site, 100% of the parcels within the site are deemed to be occupied by the definition of statute, because there's either a building on them, a paved parking lot, or gravel parking lot. The idea behind this with the legislature is they don't want us to be able to slap a bunch of green field within a TIF redevelopment site and call it blighted. They want to make sure that there's actual improvements on the site and that they are going to be redeveloped by the TIF district. So, that's the purpose for why the parcels have to be occupied. And then additionally, the other test is that more than 50% of the buildings are determined to be structurally substandard. This is sometimes referred to as blighted buildings, but the definition is actually structurally substandard, which is defined further in statute. So, the definition of structurally substandard has to do with the cost of bringing that existing building into compliance with the current building code. If the cost of bringing that building into compliance with the current building code exceeds 15% of the cost of constructing a new building of that same size and type, it is considered structurally substandard. So, in the case of this, the building A doesn't meet current zoning code and typical building codes, but as well, the amount of improvements that would be required to bring that building into compliance with the current code would exceed by more than 15% the cost of building a new building of that same size and type, even though you couldn't actually build a new building of that same size and type in that location because it doesn't meet current building requirements and zoning code beyond just the structural building code. So, the building does qualify as more than structurally substandard, and again, the requirement is that more than 50% of the building, so in this case, the one building would have to qualify. Little bit of, there's, you know, it's very particular with the more than 50%. If you have two buildings within a property and only one qualifies, that development would actually not qualify for redevelopment district because it has to be more than 50%. In this case, we've only got the one building. So, at the end of the TIF plan, you can see documentation from the city's building official as to the description for why that building is not code compliant, largely to do with ADA accessibility, electrical improvements, and plumbing improvements that would be necessary to make that building code compliant. Doesn't require that the building be demolished or torn down, it's not red-tagged. It just means it qualifies as structurally substandard for this unique purpose of state statute for redevelopment TIF districts. So, the proposed project itself, the developer's proposing the development of a 57-unit market-rate apartment project. The project was proposed to encompass the entire Block 25 area. The building's proposed to be four stories and include underground and surface parking, and it has an approximate development cost of 10%. Or, excuse me, 10 million. One of the things that I also failed to mention that is unique to TIF districts or to redevelopment TIF districts, when we talk about public improvements and what has to be incurred, there's what's known as the 90% rule, which is in place for redevelopment TIF districts. So, the 90% rule says that 90% of the tax increment revenue generated by that district has to be used to remediating costs that allowed that property to be considered structurally substandard and blighted in the first place. So, that limits the things that we could reimburse the developer for to things such as land acquisition, soil correction, demolition, site prep, as well as adjacent public utilities. There's another layer of statute within, layer of statute that is specific to redevelopment TIF districts that again, further defines that nexus between the remediation of blighting circumstances and the creation of a redevelopment TIF district. It really helps narrow and define that there's that correlation between what the TIF is being created for and what is being used to fund. It requires that 90% of that TIF revenue has to remove and remediate those blighting conditions. So, you can't use TIF from a redevelopment district to do vertical improvements, because the vertical improvements itself wouldn't be remediating that. You can use TIF to do environmental remediation, because that's the type of thing that would be a financial and a physical barrier to the redevelopment of that site. So, again, there's a, the 90% rule requires this correlation between the things that allow the district to be considered a redevelopment TIF district and the use of the future tax increment dollars. So, with that, how is a TIF district created? There's a statutory process. So, we're in the midst of this. The city already has a development district that encompasses the corporate boundaries of the city. So, within a development district, you would create individual TIF districts. So, the development district is already in place, and tonight we'd be talking about the creation of an individual TIF district for this project. So, as part of that, there's a drafting of the TIF plan that defines the project, the duration, the location, and the things that we'd be using TIF for. That was included in your packet tonight. And then ultimately, the process culminates in a public hearing, which is being proposed to be held on November 1st. So, the action that is before you tonight is if you are so inclined, would be to adopt the public hearing, a resolution calling for that public hearing to be held on November 1. At that point, after you hold a public hearing, is when then you would take action on the actual creation of the TIF district. It would be, you can only do that after taking public comment. So, the decision tonight is, do you want to move forward with that process? But I'm also happy to answer any questions you have about the project itself and TIF as a whole.
Council, do you have any questions at this time? Councilmember O'Brien?
There was some issues with contaminated soil at the project. Do you know anything about that?
I do, and I would refer to Aaron and Ted, the developer, as they would have a more intimate knowledge as to what the condition of the property was, but I do know that there were environmental issues found on the site, and that is one of the proposed reimbursable expenses as it relates to the use of TIF, would be the remediation of that.
Do one of you wish to answer that now, or do you want to, should we hold that and see if there's any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember O'Brien, councilmembers, yes, there's been a Phase 1 and a Phase 2, actually a Phase 2 draft that have been accomplished as part of this. There have been several items in the discovery process. Uh, there have been several items, uh, in the discovery process. On the west side of the city's parking lot, uh, in the middle, uh, closer to 3rd, uh, there were petroleum odors that were noted, uh, up to 12 feet down. Um, in addition, there are some chemicals that are in the, uh, area where the dry cleaning building was. And then just recently, uh, there was a discovery of, of, uh, construction debris uh, that is also on the city's parking lot. Uh, so, um, we are still waiting for the final, uh, Phase 2 to be done, however, it's clear that there will be remediation efforts. If they have to move, remove 30,000 cubic yards of material, uh, and you take maybe 10 tons per load, that's 1,500 loads you'd have to remove, that's $450,000 just in the removal of soil. Hopefully, it won't be the worst-case scenario and that there are only just pockets that are having to be removed. Uh, that would be the hope on that. But, uh, my view is that, uh, the, the TIF will be very necessary for this project, and a good chunk of the TIF will be used for remediation efforts.
Did you say petroleum, there's 12 feet down? Is that what you said?
Petroleum odors, correct.
Odors.
Yes. So on the northwest corner of the city's parking lot, years ago, way before my time, there used to be a gas station there. Thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for November 1st.
2nd.
603.
Okay. Additional comments or questions? We have a motion in a second. Tom, I have a question for you. Um, so, uh, in my previous life, I worked as a fire marshal. And, um, so there are cleanup funds that are available for these types of projects. Does this site, if they use the cleanup funds, does that go as a credit to the TIF, or does that go as a credit to the developer?
Uh, in this case, uh, and I could defer to Mr. Bachman as well as to the application that is being made, there, they, they are seeking additional cleanup funds from deed as it relates to the, uh, to the redevelopment of this site. I think those would be, to be able to be used to assist additional project costs in addition to what is proposed to be reimbursed from TIF. So if they are successful, it would help remove some of those financial barriers, but it would not reduce the amount of TIF assistance that's being proposed. I think we'll have more than enough eligible TIF cost and more than enough need from a financial perspective for both of those sources of assistance to be necessary for the project to be feasible.
Mr. Bachman.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Olten and Make, um, uh, well, no, it's Braun InterTech. Braun InterTech, correct? That's working on Phase 2? Yeah, uh, Braun InterTech is doing the Phase 2, and they have a wealth of experience dealing with, uh, applications to the state for, uh, for those type of, uh, grant dollars. Uh, and, uh, I think that I will defer a little bit to Ted here, uh, on that. You've had some discussions with Braun InterTech and kind of where they're at in the process.
Good to see you again.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Uh, my name's Ted Schmidt. I am from Lumber One, Avon, Lumber One Development Company. Uh, so yes, we've been, this has been on a process of discovery of finding out what's on this property, underneath this property that we didn't know. So at this point, uh, we're discovering that there, there's significant cleanup, and we are contracting with Braun InterTech to help us with those applications. Uh, worse, because of the pockets of where the petroleum is and, and the different, uh, other type of contaminants, we don't have, we have a worst-case scenario, we believe a worst-case scenario, but we don't have a final number on what those costs are going to be. And so we're, we're contracted with Braun InterTech to help us identify those costs and identify some other sources to help make this project feasible, because it's, it's running way over a typical flat lot somewhere else in Wilmer. So, uh, does that answer the question? Well?
Yeah, and I don't know if the question maybe is better addressed to Aaron. But my question is, is, it's a very specific question. Um, and that is that if you're, if you get the credit from the, uh, cleanup funds, you know, there's cleanup funds from deed, there's cleanup funds from the state fire marshal's office, and then there's cleanup funds also, I think, under the, I think it's under SAR, I think, if I remember correctly. So, um, so I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of the project, but I, I don't want us to give TIF in an area to clean up the, the site, if you will, and then the state come back and give you funds for the same project. So that's, that's my question. And maybe Aaron might.
Right, Mr. Mayor, uh, council members.
Aaron might understand how I talk better. Sometimes I'm not very clear in my ear.
What I would say is that you can't double-dip, and so the intent would be that all costs that would be with the TIF would not be replicated with the, the grant.
Thank you, thank you. Additional comments or questions from council? We have a motion that's been made in second and roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Abstain.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays, one abstain.
Uh, that motion does pass. Our planner, Mr. Adid Du, did I get it right? Um, thank you for your work on that. I appreciate all the work that you've put into this, and, uh, and I'm, I'm still working on your name, and I, and I, I respect you greatly, and, uh, I apologize ahead of time, but I thank you for the work you do, so.
Thanks.
You bet. Next, we have RDC National Incorporated, and this is Mr. Bachman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council again. Root Bush Development and Construction, or RDC National, intends to build a logistics facility of approximately 217,000 square feet in the Wilmer Industrial Park 4th Edition. The project is currently estimated to cost close to $26 million. A purchase agreement, uh, between the city of Wilmer and RDC was approved, as you are aware, on August 16, after which the city council began the process for formal land use approvals. The original purchase agreement, the city, uh, in, in the original purchase agreement, the city agreed to install a traffic signal at the intersection of County Road 5 and Wilmer Avenue, contingent upon approval from MINDOT. Subsequently, a traffic study was commissioned by the developer that showed the expected traffic levels at the intersection would not justify the installation of a traffic signal according to MINDOT standards. Uh, the party, um, the parties have therefore had lengthy negotiations, as Robert can attest to, uh, and negotiated an amendment to the original purchase agreement. Uh, under this amendment, the city would not be required to install the signal until warranted under MINDOT standards. RDC National is eager to close on the purchase of the industrial park land so they can move ahead with the project, and you may have seen some equipment out there. Uh, they would purchase 24.84 acres in blocks 2 and 3 in the industrial park. It has been determined by the developer that the cost to extend Wilmer Avenue Southwest and Trot Avenue Southwest to the western edge of the 6.3 acres of unplatted land is not feasible at this time. And that was another discussion point that we had, is do you extend those roads another 350 feet or so? The amended purchase agreement, development agreement, and updated plat, um, also reflect removal of this unplatted area. This, this change, however, does not affect the size or scope of the logistics facility. I would like to add, uh, that RDC has expressed an interest in pursuing a first right of refusal agreement for the 6.3 acres to enable a future expansion. This first right of refusal agreement would be developed after closing on the 24.84 acres of platted land in the industrial park. The idea is you plan for that expansion in the future. Hence, it was still beneficial for this body, uh, as you did on October 4th, to rezone the unplatted land in question. Uh, moving on to the amendment, and there are, so there are three things I'd like to cover here. The first is the amended purchase agreement. So, it's this one here. Basically, uh, we are moving to amendment number one, and you'll kind of, you'll see there in paragraph 1 where the 6.3 acres has been taken out. This also adjusts the price of the, of the purchase, uh, price from 699,750 to 621,000 because we're taking out the 60, 6, 6.3 acres. Uh, again, as a recap, uh, the, uh, value of the property, uh, for the blocks 2 and 3 was 25,000 an acre. The value of the unplatted land was 12,500 an acre. So if you do the math there, it, uh, comes out to 78,750 for that unplatted land. Uh, in addition, there's been language, uh, added, uh, into the purchase agreement related to the traffic studies, uh, that would need to be completed, and some other, uh, smaller And so, that's, that's the first item. Now I'd like to move on to the development agreement, and...
Would you like us to take action on the first item first?
Um, sure, that would be great.
Uh, Mayor, yeah, to keep it clean, I'd recommend that, and I actually did have a comment to add on the traffic signal.
Go ahead.
Language. So the, uh, as Aaron explained, excuse me, as EDC, uh, coordinator Bachman explained, the, uh, contemplation, I think at the time the purchase agreement was approved, was that the city would be installing a signal at the intersection of Wilmer Avenue and County Road 5, uh, to the extent funding had been identified, it was contemplated, it would come from the industrial park fund. Subsequently, the city received a traffic study showing that, from the developer, that the developer commissioned, showing that it's just not going to meet the warrant analysis, the warrant standards MINDOT has before a traffic signal would be approved. So we had extensive negotiations on this language, and what we are left with is a process for the city to continue studying whether traffic volumes at that intersection would warrant the installation of a signal. And the city is agreeing in this language to complete a study before the end of 2024. Uh, hopefully, once this facility is online and more information about the traffic volumes are known, and then if that study does not show at that time that the, uh, signal is warranted, according to MINDOT standards, the city would do another study before the end of 2026. If either of those studies were to come back and show that the signal is warranted, and the city could get a signal approved by MINDOT and/or Kandehoe County, since it's a county road, the city's obligation to install that traffic signal would trigger and, uh, take effect at that time. But at this point, the city's obligation is to continue studying it, um, the next study being due at the end of 2024, and we'll just follow the recommendation from those studies. That's what's been agreed to with the parties, um, to address what was really a, a kind of thorny development, uh, after the purchase agreement was finalized. So with that, I think I would recommend, uh, that the council take action first on the purchase agreement amendment, and then we'll do the development agreement.
Counsel, what are your wishes?
I can make a motion to adopt the resolution amending the purchase agreement with RDC National and authorizing the mayor and city administrators sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
Motion made in second and discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bachman, that's six acres, they want a first right of refu, of refusal. Uh, the purchase price might not be the same.
That is correct.
And they understand that.
Right, there would be further negotiations, uh, but I think that would desire, at least for talking with Carl, uh, Carl Root Bush, was that let's close on this, uh, transaction, the 24.4 acres, so they can get into the ground, uh, and move ahead, and that those discussions would continue on in terms of the 6.3. I, I do know that the attorney for Carl, uh, for RDC has reached out to, to Robert, uh, but at this point, I don't want to, uh, confuse the two. Let's put one and complete the one transaction, and then we can start the discussions on the other.
And then if they don't purchase that 6.3 acres, would there be someone else that's willing to buy a track like that, being next to a big building with a lot of truck traffic?
Uh, there, there could be other parties. At this point, um, I'm not aware of any others right now, but there could be down the road. It's on the other side of the, uh, electrical transmission line, um, so it's, it's possible.
Okay.
Yep.
Because we do have a right of first refusal with Jennie to the, the property to the north.
Right.
Their plant, so it's not unheard of.
Right, there have been three first right of refusal agreements, uh, with different businesses in the industrial park, and when I mentioned that to Carl, he warmed up to the idea that maybe that would be a way to go, uh, because they've talked about, uh, expanding in the future. If they add another 60,000 to 100,000 square feet to this, this structure, uh, the most logical direction would be to the west, so.
Okay. And then I don't understand the stop and go light. State took one out on County Road 5 by the railroad tracks, and we were asked a few years ago by people living west of town that travel on Highway 40 to put a stop and go light there, so. It's going to be needed, trust me.
Right. You know, uh, stoplights are an interesting topic, uh, and, uh, I would say that, um, if you look at County Road 5, um, I could envision that there will be, uh, other improvements needed in the future, whether they're, they are stoplights or other. Uh, and, uh, the, all you have to do is look at what are the traffic patterns happening in our fastest-growing corridor right now in the city of Wilmer has been CR 5. Uh, in the most recent, uh, average daily count, it's up 2,000 vehicles a day, uh, and I, I see that trend continuing on as, as we add more apartments, as we add more, uh, businesses, um, Dooley's, I was just talking with Mr. Dooley, um, recently, and he's got a project in mind, so I, I see more trucks going on this road.
Thank you.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Is there a, a fee for the first right of refusal?
Uh, first right of refusals can have a variety of conditions, but typically, there would be an expectation of compensation that would go to the city for setting it up. I would recommend not a 10-year, uh, first right refusal, as was done, uh, not that long ago, uh, but I would recommend something shorter, perhaps three to five years, uh, but there would be a monetary, uh, uh, component to it.
Okay, thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I just want to go back to the stoplight one more time. Is there more to it than just traffic counts? And I can understand the traffic going north and south, but does it also have to have the traffic east and west in order to, is that, and the anticipated traffic doesn't count? Is that part of the issue, or is there more?
Right, and I'm not an engineer, but what I would say is that you are looking at not only the, the traffic counts, but you're looking at the wait times, uh, you're looking at, and, and at certain peak times of the day, um, and other factors. I, I guess I would, uh, defer to the city administrative valiant.
If you, um, the study that was given to you and the warrants that were there, if Jared would have been here, Jared, city engineer Vogi would have, uh, told you that at this time, they're not meeting those warrants, which means that they're, I believe, I don't have it in front of me either, but I believe the counts had to be close to over 400 or better at certain times, and they also take into consideration traffic flows north, south, east, west. So they take into consideration all turns and what turns they're taking, and, um, also then at what particular times, and they also take into consideration their study of what they said they would have for increased traffic. So it is based on traffic that they project in 2023 when they are open and functioning.
Additional comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And resolution passes. Mr. Bachman.
All right, thank you.
You're approving the development agreement and authorizing signatures.
Right. So you have before you a resolution? So you have before you a resolution that's between the city of Wilmer and the 2022 Wilmer LLC, which is the assignee of RDC National. And there's a couple of things I would like to review in this revised development agreement. I think this is version 13 or version 14. I've lost track. But a lot of these items you are already aware of. But I want to highlight a couple of things. On page three, under right to proceed, the developer may not construct until, and there are various conditions that need to be satisfied. This agreement needs to be fully executed. There needs to be necessary security that's been received by the city, money. The plat needs to be recorded. There's there's just a number of things that need to be done. I can give, I can tell you that the folks with RDC have been working diligently on things. Another thing is the site plan for the developer improvements. I have the revised civil plans that have been worked on by Balag Engineering, construction plans that are approved and signed by the city engineer and so forth. This is a copy just of the revised storm water management plan that was submitted. And this is the second version of it. So they are working diligently, I feel, on the plans. Moving on, the fourth, page four, development plans, plat, final grading, final construction plan, storm water pollution prevention plan, storm water management plan, as I alluded to, utility plan. They will be paying SAC and WAC fees. That is the sewer availability charges and the city water connection charges. They will be paying other fees as well, for example, park dedication. That will amount to just under $28,000, for example. So we've already talked about the $140,000 that they need to pay related to the water main relocation. And we've talked about the $11,000 that needs to be paid for the disconnect on the electrical systems. But there are other things that they're paying. The developer shall construct various things, such as capping the sanitary sewer on 32nd Street Southwest, capping the water main, storm sewer facilities, surface water facilities such as pipe and ponds, grading and drainage. Moving on to page seven, I've already talked about the vacations. The city will need to vacate on 32nd Street to accommodate the building. If you look at on the on the top of page eight, for example, right now, we have in the middle of block three, a 70-foot wide drainage and utility easement. It's basically a large ditch. That will be where the building will be going. And so for the majority of it, they will be piping it in large pipes underground, not underneath the building. And that will require an investment on their part. Plus, there will be a pond that will be capturing that, too. The developer will construct and dedicate associated storm water collection and conveyance infrastructures, is what I'm saying. The developer will deposit a 7% administrative cost, and that is related to city engineering administration, and that amounts to 25,000. Permits, the developer shall obtain or require its contractors and subcontractors to obtain all necessary permits, that is from MPCA, Department of Health, and all other agencies. So they will have a number of things that they will need to seek. The developer shall schedule a pre-con meeting, pre-construction meeting, for the required developer improvements. At this point, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Robert Scott for the rest of the development agreement.
Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Before I get into other specific provisions, I wanted to just, for the council's benefit, point out the purpose this agreement serves. Obviously, not every project that comes forward requires a development agreement. If a project is a permitted use or allowed under zoning and is entitled to a building permit, a lot of these details just get handled in the permit application process. What required a development agreement here is that this project requires the construction of infrastructure that will be turned over and dedicated to the city for city maintenance at the end of the project. The council, I'm sure, remembers that you have recently vacated the right of way, 32nd Street with between Wilmer and Trotter avenues on this plat, as well as a drainage easement that existed previously. Those vacations were conditioned on the city essentially receiving satisfactory assurances and commitments from the developer that they would restore the drainage capacity on this site as part of their project. And that's what we're doing with this development agreement. So the public improvements that are really the subject of this agreement are a stormwater detention pond on the that will be constructed on the south portion of the site near Wilmer Avenue. It will take runoff from Wilmer Avenue and point south, and it will then convey that runoff eventually into a new storm sewer pipe running north off the site. Both those facilities, the pond and the pipe, will be dedicated to the city and maintained by the city going forward. There's also detention ponds that will be just managed by the property owner that will take runoff from the site itself. So the development agreement establishes the terms and conditions under which the developer will construct those improvements and then turn them over to the city for maintenance going forward. Aaron has, again, EDC Director Backman has, I think, addressed many of the specific provisions. The other ones I would highlight, there is a park dedication fee that will be paid that's calculated just based on the assessed value of the land pre-project. It's a strict calculation coming straight from city code. That amounted to nearly $28,000. Obviously, the SAC and WAC fees, water access, sewer access fees will be charged at the same as they would under any project, again, in accordance with city code. The there are special provisions. And the one instance in this agreement where there's a significant obligation on the city simply mirrors the traffic signal language that we already discussed in the purchase agreement amendment. That's restated here. So the city will have the obligation to continue studying traffic volumes. And if it indicates a signal is warranted, at that time, install a signal at the intersection of Wilmer Avenue and County Road Five. Just going forward here, all of the improvements the developer is making that are subject to this agreement, so the basically the detention pond and the storm new storm sewer main will be warranted by the developer for a period of two years. And they will provide a warranty bond that would allow the city to call against it in the event there is construction defects that are discovered within that two-year period. And then pursuant to city code, there are security requirements. So the developer is required to give a letter of credit for 30% of the total construction cost for the portions of the project that are going to be dedicated to the city. That means the city will receive a letter of credit of about $108,000. The total construction costs for the public improvements are estimated to be about $361,000. So that will be a resource available to the city in the event there are problems encountered with the developer's construction of those components. Obviously, in addition to that, the developer will need the certificate of occupancy, and that won't be issued until all aspects of the project have been satisfactory, satisfactorily completed. EDC Director Backman had also indicated some of the payments that will be made in order to cover the city's out-of-pocket costs, either incurred to date or expected to be incurred during the project. In addition to the park dedication fee, that would include, for example, city engineering, construction observation, our offices' expenses for the extensive work we've done negotiating this agreement and other aspects of the project. And then engineering administration as well. Ultimately, that's going to amount to about $63,000 that we know about now, and then our firm's fees added onto that. And I think those are the significant provisions and the purpose the agreement serves. The resolution in your packet, we'd recommend the council approve it. But first, I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have about the development agreement.
Okay, council, what are your wishes on the development agreement and authorizing signatures?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the development agreement with RDC National, Inc., and authorizing the mayor and city administrator to sign it on behalf of the city.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Rule call.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero knees.
That resolution passes. Mr. Backman, we have one more, I believe. It's a resolution approving the amendment to the previously approved industrial park fifth edition major subdivision.
Right. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, following the Wilmer Planning Commission's review and favorable recommendation, the city council acted, as you may recall, on September 20th to approve the Wilmer Industrial Park Fifth Edition Major Subdivision. And whereas the city council's conditional approval of of the subdivision, and the city and developer have agreed to amend the purchase agreement to exclude the 6.3 acres, unplanted acres, west of the fourth edition for from this transaction, and the developer now desires to exclude such acres from the final plat, we would have this subdivision revised.
Council, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve an amendment to the previously approved industrial park fifth edition major subdivision.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the amendment of the previously adopted industrial park fifth edition major subdivision. Discussion. Rule call.
Councilmember Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero knees.
That resolution passes.
Thank you.
Aaron, thank you for your work, we appreciate it. Next, we have consideration of an introduction of an ordinance to rezone additional 4.1 acres at Wilmer Poultry Site from government institution to agricultural. Mr. Adiatu, am I getting better?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Our city planner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. As we all know, the Wilmer Poultry Innovations intends to buy 4.1 acres. I believe that the sale ordinance will be introduced later tonight. On October 13th, the planning commission approved the rezon. And the next action is to introduce the ordinance for a public hearing on November 1st, 2021, to rezone the 4.1 acres from government to Ag. And this will will allow for the continuous continued use of the property in a manner that conforms with the city's comprehensive plan.
Okay. Council, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for November 1st, 6:04 PM.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. I would just like to thank you for how fast you've worked on this. You guys really had to roll up your sleeves and get it done. So thank you very much for your diligent work, I do appreciate it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's a 10 minute.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion just carries. Next, we have the sale of 4.1 acres to Wilmer Poultry Innovations, Ms. Valiant. And I think we have three different actions we need to take here.
Yes. As you recall, the the Planning Commission on the 13th also approved introducing the ordinance of the land sale to the Wilmer Poultry Innovations. And two weeks ago, we had the closed hearing, or not closed hearing, but we had the closed session to discuss the purchase of the land agreement. And it was decided at 11,000 per acre is what we were going to offer. And that offer has been accepted. And so now we need to authorize the sale of that. And so we have to conduct a public hearing on November 1st.
So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded to introduce an ordinance authorizing land sale for the public hearing at on November 1st at 6:05 PM. Discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Councilmember Butterfield.
Are we set at the price where we're going to be selling it for? Get it there or not?
Yeah, we agreed on the 11,000, and they've agreed to that price as well.
Okay.
Just for comments or questions? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Next, we have a motion to publish the ordinance by summary.
So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded to publish the ordinance by summary. Discussion. All in favor, a rule call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero knees.
That resolution passes. Next, we have a resolution approving the temporary license agreement for site preparation and authorizing signatures. Ms. Valiant.
Yes, enclosed in your packet was a commercial resolution to allow them to start doing some site preparations on the 4.1 acres. When they purchased the purchase the original property back in 2015, they also had gone outside of the purchase area and used the clay on the farmland to do their construction site for their building. And they would like to do that again. So they will be going outside of their 4.1 acres to the north. There's a hill over there that they will be excavating, and they will take off the black dirt and use the clay underneath it and then reseed that and put that back in black dirt for farmland again. And if there's any crops out there, they have agreed that they will pay the renter for their any crop damages. So we'll be going further with that. And so then this would allow them to start doing some site preparations because we are coming upon the winter season here shortly. And so they really want to get started on this project.
Okay, so what I understand is that this gives them the opportunity to go in and start their site preparations and also get to borrow. But they are liable for any liquidated damages against the farmer.
Yes, and they will be, of course, held responsible to the city to make sure that the land is put back into usable property so that it the black dirt will be put back on.
So this is the same as what was done last time, you said?
Correct, this is going to be the same process that was done last time.
Okay, somebody want to introduce that temporary license agreement?
No question.
Well, let's get a motion a second, then you can ask a question after that, if that's all right.
I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution approving temporary license agreement for site preparations.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Councilmember O'Brien.
Will they be contacting the landowner?
Yes. They make the crop damages to the landowner, to the renter, not the landowner. We're the landowner, to the renter.
Just for comments or questions? Rule call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero knees.
That resolution passes as well. Thank you for your work on this. I know you've put in countless number of hours on this project as well. And I know you get those phone calls, and everybody wants to go fast.
Yes, that's the time of year.
So you and your staff have done a great job, so.
We thank you all for doing that, too.
Next, we have consideration of change order number one to project number 2103A, First Street Mill and Overlay, our public works director, Mr. Manzer.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Coming before you to recommend the approval of project number 2103A, First Street Overlay, change order number one, in the amount of $64,387.88. This change order is a result of they're doing some catch basin casting, switch outs, and we did some further investigation, seeing that our structures underneath the catch basins were in dire need of some work that was not caught on the plan prior to. So we had to make those adjustments before they installed the road. And then they also, there was on further review, we found 400 additional feet of curb that needed to be replaced as part of the project. So stand for any questions, I guess.
Okay, so we have a consideration of change order number one. Council, what are your wishes?
So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve change order number one, project number 2103A, First Street Mill Street Mill and Overlay. Discussion. Rule call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passed. Next, we have consideration of new off-sale intoxicating liquor license for RT Stores LLC. Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the new owners of Westside Market and Liquor request to hold an off-sale intoxicating liquor license located at 3001 First Avenue Northwest under the name RT Stores LLC, doing business as Westside Market and Liquor. And the background checks and criminal history have all been completed by the police department, so we're asking for council's approval to approve this license.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the consideration of new off-sale intoxicating liquor license for RT Stores, which is Westside Liquors. Discussion. Rule call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, we have a consideration of setting a date for council work session. Ms. Valiant.
Our retreat that was held October 8th through the 9th went very well, I thought, and so this is a request to have a follow-up work session that will review the work that we had accomplished during that time, and then also set some action goals in the future. So this would be approximately about a two-hour work session, maybe three tops. The suggested date is April, or April, November 9th, and about a 6:30 start time. With Cheryl Glasser at $500 would be her requested amount for that evening session for the three hours. I think we went, we got a lot accomplished, not as much as we thought we would as far as action items, but I think we're on a good start, and I'm really looking forward to our follow-up here with Cheryl.
I know that there was a request from Councilmember Butterfield because of his work schedule to start maybe at 7:00. Is there any appetite to start at 7:00?
That's all up to you.
I mean, I think that, I think we need to consider, you know, I mean, we're missing Councilmember Plowman tonight because of our early start time as well, and, you know...
This morning's going to be harder.
Councilmember Butterfield, you know, I mean, he had to leave people in the field today and not get his work done. You know, he got his own work done, but, you know, I mean, people aren't getting their mail because Councilmember Butterfield is here, and, I mean, here we are again, 7:00, we're done, and, I mean, it doesn't seem to make much sense to do that. So I would respectfully request that we move it to 7:00, but unless council's against that.
I would just speak, I think you just stated, if it goes like our retreat did, we could probably be there till midnight if we wanted to be. So it just seems that we have a difficulty setting a priority for the meeting, 7:00. If that's what it is, then that's what it is. But I do think this council should be able to do something other than in the evening.
Anybody else? So I am recommending 7:00. Anybody else have comments in regards to that, amending it to 7:00? Okay. I would entertain a motion to consider setting our date for November 9th at 7:00 PM at the Wilmer Fire Station for follow-up work on our retreat.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Nelson.
There's an additional cost. Do we need to include that in the motion or not?
$500 additional cost.
Then it becomes a resolution, right?
I don't know. I'm just wondering if we need to authorize it, that's all.
I can authorize $500.
We don't have to.
Well, I had, she had that introduction, and so I was just simply changing the time. So I was assuming everything else was in the motion. So the motion heard seconded, are you okay with the $500 fee?
Sure. I'm again hoping that our city administrator can spend $500 without us voting on it, though.
Baby steps. Motion made and seconded to include the $500 in the motion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry.
Thank you.
So on community private announcements, I only have one thing. For those of you driving on Highway 71 north out of Wilmer, Business 71, and then further north, my understanding is that tonight, that road is supposed to be open, and an email we received from Ms. Valiant this afternoon, so that's great news. And does any of the councilmembers have any items that they'd like to add? Councilmember O'Brien.
Last Thursday, we had a, kind of, sort of a fundraiser again for the Flags of Honor at the WAC, and they had an amazing concert. Anybody that was there could share that, right, Rick?
Right.
And it was packed. I mean, there wasn't, I don't think there was a seat left, was there? It was a great program, one of the best programs, one of the best bands I've seen in a long time.
Councilmember Fagerly called me the next morning, or I called him, I should say, and he was filling me in on it. Councilmember Davis and City Administrator Valiant and myself were at the Wilmer Area Community Foundation event, and that was a good event as well. So good to hear that that was a good fundraiser for them, but it's a great project. And my understanding is that if you want pavers, there's still pavers available.
Still pavers available.
Get ahold of them for those. Anything else for the good of the order? That, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.